I did.
I read through.
I'll make a motion when approved in minutes for July, the July 3 meeting as written.
Second.
All clear. All votes. Let Reese hit in the first.
Huh?
Lib free that.
No.
Well, definitely.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, sorry. Now, let's go right down to the next one.
All right, first up is Stephen Dane, 238 34th Street, map 153 lot 022, application for the greatest practical extent. Come up to the podium.
I'm gonna give you guys just a little background on this one. So, John Ozzy, Mr. John Ozzy is with us tonight for greatest practical extent because they're proposing to remodel part of a camp and there is a slab on the ground that they want to utilize, not knowing if it's structurally sound to use that. They want to just kind of foresee if they have to replace that. They don't want to have to come into the planning board for a great structural extent if that is the case. So they want, just in case they do have to replace it, they're looking for that kind of, you know, approval now. If you understand what I'm saying. I think you can give a little bit more back if you, you know.
The slab is hard. We can tell it's been there for a significant amount of time. We have pictures going back into the eighties. When it was sitting there. I don't know particularly why it was used or what for. It's relatively flat. It's unchanged. There's no cracks in it. It's not heaved on either side. So it looks like it might be usable.
John, is this the slab that we're talking about right here?
Um, no, that, yes, that is his slab. Yes, it is. And that's the one.
So it's currently being used as a carport?
Um. Hmm.
So would it, would that be the entire footprint of the addition or it was expanded on?
Pretty close, yep. That's around 300 square feet maximum we could achieve and pretty much occupies that location.
I can't make eye to hair of this picture. Is that patio, this bisected building here, the front part?
I can't tell which image you're looking at. Can we get it up on the screen?
Yeah, give me a second. I, uh...
Oh, on the next one.
Might be. Oh, well, I'm trying to figure out the next one now. Is this one existing, the pool?
I think, I think it was just by Jason. The one who's looking at the picture is a low writing corner. There we go. So, yes, that's the structure. And if you, the structure which is closest to the road, you can see that the roof pitches more or less east and west. And then there's an addition on that which pitches left and right. It's having an odd thing. But our part is just a little part that sticks out off to the west side.
Go back up.
Go to the side by side of the one up above the, right there. That's the one I was trying to...
Yeah.
So patio is what you want to close in. What's beyond the patio?
Nothing.
Proposed addition.
The, basically the patio. So it goes a little bit beyond the patio. It's a total of, what, 20 square feet by 15 square feet? And the patio is around 14.
It looks like, cause it's, took a wall line, 17 feet, 11 and a fraction inches, whereas now we have 11 feet and a fraction.
That, yeah, that's a distance from the setback.
Right. So the, it looks like the proposed addition is six feet beyond the slab.
That's correct. And the slab is 18 or so feet. Entire addition is 20, 20 feet and change. It's 300 feet, 300 square feet. That's what we had to achieve.
So, so we're, we're really looking at best practical location?
Yes.
With, I mean, cause it, it expands beyond the existing footprint of the slab.
I think the elevations tell a good story as well.
Is that all gonna be closed in?
Yes.
Addition part?
Yes.
So part of that enclosure will be on the slab and part?
Yeah, I, I just spoke when I said that. I thought for some reason it was obvious.
And then there's a vestibule that's approximately four feet by five feet that, you can see it in the floor plan. I think that's all existing. And there's the new, where the door is, is a little vestibule that goes back around four feet. And then you're looking at the end elevation of the addition, which is on the right-hand side.
So the bottom picture, the addition is detailed.
Yes, that's correct. Except that door exists. The addition ends before that door.
Okay, walk me through your lot coverage calculation on your...
Lot coverage, and you'd have to bring up the, that picture slide. We're basically only increasing the footprint, as I said, by 300 square feet. And the existing footprint is around, I can't quite remember now, around 1,600, I think, no, about 800 or 900 or so on the ground. So we're basically only increasing our lot coverage by a few percentage points. I think you can see that bottom.
Hold it.
But we're well below the maximum.
Because they're using, they're utilizing that, that part of that, or that slab and then just using it going over a little bit more. That's why it's only going up.
So that six-foot slab is the 103 square feet.
Six foot, yeah, yeah, that's right.
Called a six-foot extension.
Right. To my knowledge, nothing has to be removed vegetatively. There's also a 3D image that I use for mass calculations that kind of explains.
Back there?
Right there.
Yeah.
You can see the indentation there, left hand, a right hand model.
So you got a porch on the other side of the building?
There's an existing porch up there, yeah. On the lake side, that's correct.
Yeah, yeah. Let's not be close. They didn't stay away.
No, it's just, it's just interesting how it appears different in the two models. So I was just, threw my attention to the green square. Yeah, it's a porch. Yeah, I think I saw a picture of it, of a array of windows. No, that's sorry. We can stay on this one for a second.
Yeah.
There's the porch, yeah. Oh, I, oh, I see. It's a second-story porch, sort of, you walk underneath it. Oh, okay. That's why it appears open source.
Yeah, it's an open porch, so you don't need to use that volume just square footage only.
But not necessarily on, but that's...
No, it's just the, the rear of the house is the one that's being worried about.
Yeah, yeah. That foundation there under the rest of the house, is it?
It's like a block foundation.
So it's winterized?
Yes, it's, yeah, it's four seasons.
You're not gonna... Cause you're gonna use the slab, which you're, you're gonna put just a little, a little crawl space or something on top of the slab? Or is it just gonna be kind of... Don't you have plumbing in there?
There's a bathroom that's right off of the existing house and we're gonna close that place in and make sure that it's frost protected. So that its ambient temperature is above freezing.
Yeah.
And we may, it just depends on the slab itself. We're con, we're set to put a frost protect wall down there if we have to. If not, we may carry some of it on peers. But the pipe part will be frost protected all the way around and basically rejoined with the foundation of the house. Cause the plumbing is coming from that location on that side of house facing the porch.
Good?
Yeah, I mean, just, just, I guess we'll just say as long as it's... Nothing's located any closer to the lake than existing.
Yeah.
I mean, the addition's in the heart of it. Just any, any changes.
Okay.
I mean, instead of setting the distance from the lake.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the application for greatest practical extent for the project at 238 34th Street in Acton. Oh, there is a lot, 022, map 153, with the condition that no change is made is any closer to the, the lake.
I'll second.
All clear. All votes. Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen. Thank you, Jason.
All right, next up would be Lib Free Land Development, Tattle Street, map 252, lot 001 subdivision application.
Hello. Good evening. I'll just put this here just as a reminder. I think you all know who we are and what we're trying to do. We just met out on site and figured since we were up here, we would meet with you all and just have a conversation based on what was experienced on site. I don't know if you want me to jump back into what our intentions are or where to start here.
Well, we went for a sidewalk. We didn't have a form, we didn't have the video. So, you know, we really shouldn't. If you want to, I mean, it's up to you, however you want to see it work.
Um, so I guess I'll do a quick reminder for the group. So we own 28 acres over at the corner of 35th Street, Tattle. You know, Tattle Street, 35th. This is the property boundary to the south. On Heath, Heath Brook, lower map, lower Mussum, we also own seven acres to the north that we have broken off by lots, lot division. We are hoping to put four single-family dwellings on the property in this general area that's already been disturbed and stumped. And we, this is our seventh meeting. We've owned the parcel for seven years, oh, sorry, we've owned the parcel for a year. This is our seventh meeting and we're here just looking for some direction from you guys to help us to get to where we want to be. And we're flexible in it. So like I said, our, our main objective, and it can look lots of ways, conventional cluster, but we want to put four single-family dwelling units in this general vicinity. The disturbed area of the parcel, which I, by my own estimate, would estimate to be about six acres of land. That's our intention. So we just met out on site just to show the site conditions to some of you guys. And we're here just because we were in town and figured we'd come and have another conversation with you. Hopefully get some direction on.
So last, last meeting Gavin ran through some numbers, probably. Did you take those numbers back and, and look at them a little bit?
Yeah, we, we've done some background. We have consulted with a Maine-based engineering firm who know, is very familiar with Maine statute as well as Acton ordinance. We previously had just gone to a civil engineering firm who is local to us in Secoast, New Hampshire, saying, hey, we just need these general calculations on CAD. They don't know anything about Acton ordinance. We've really gotten a lot of pushback. We feel respectfully from the town of Acton, like maybe we should get someone who knows a little bit more about the ordinances and how we should posture ourselves here going forward, being owning this parcel now for almost a year. And we have also consulted with an attorney who also is familiar with Maine statute and Acton ordinance. And we have told both of those individuals what our intentions are. And like I said, they are four dwelling units in this vicinity. And we would love, our, our hope, just, you know, in keeping with the spirit of rural Maine, would be four conventional lots, five-acre lots, four homes accessed by a shared driveway. I think that is the best use of the parcel. We've gotten pushback on it, understood that the regulations, you know, are going to force our hand into cluster. Whether or not that is relivable, I think there's a little bit, based on some conversations we've had now, is in question. But from where we're coming from, all, what we are asking for from the town of Acton, from you all, from the zoning board, from whoever it may be, is four dwelling units in this general vicinity. And the vicinity is defined by what has been disturbed. So the trees that are down, the grading that has occurred, the disturbance, let's keep it to it. This is not a piece of raw land anymore. So that's what some of the members have, have seen. This has been graded. It has been disturbed. Trees are down. This is where we want to develop and we want four homes here. So we're looking for some advice and direction from you all on how to get there. So that is where we are at. Figured coming in here to have that conversation before we set our engineer loose on designing something that he believes is approvable based on Maine statute and Acton town ordinance. So would love some feedback from you all.
Then let it look.
Say again?
Let it look.
Well, that, where she's talking about was, has clearly been disturbed. If you go back 250 feet, it's pretty steep, pretty ledgy, pretty undisturbed.
Mature trees. It's, this is what the land, in our opinion, is what the land wants. And you know what? We did ask Jason and you, these gentlemen, Roger and John, for some feedback. And professionally, they said, we'd love to, but kind of we can't. Let's have the discussion in the planning board, which is why we're here. But I think that smart development is important. We love this parcel. We think it's really beautiful and want to do what I think it wants. Like I said, this disturbed area here, it is a, it's a junkyard. There's rotting, there's rotting trailers, there's electrical cords in the, there's like canoes with holes. There's docks that are, you know, it's just a total junkyard. We want to clean it up and do it what's right by it. And in the meantime, do something that's good for Acton, you know? We've met with all the butters. Everyone's on our side. Not that we have gotten no negative feedback from any of the neighbors. They have all offered to be at meetings anytime. They're frustrated on our behalf with our experience so far. So we really think that we're trying to be right by the property, right by the town, right by the neighbors.
Is there any history, Jason, on relief from that cluster subdivision ordinance?
We kind of already went through all this. We're kind of just reiterating the last meeting and now I would like to see us moving forward and not just debating the same subjects that were already discussed at length at the last meeting.
Yes, but respectfully, you guys have come to conclusions that we may not agree with. And I think that there are town staff that have indicated to us in the past that there are conclusions that have been made even by town council that they don't necessarily agree with. And the council that we have consulted tend to agree with us, that that is why relief is able to be granted.
Well, at this point, I really feel like we shouldn't move forward until we get a proper application from you that shows that you can fit four lots on this, each with five acres outside the resource protection district, which that map does not show. And then at that time, once you prove you could fit four lots, including the resource protection district, you would want to submit a proposal for a cluster subdivision which is outside of the shoreline zone. So, and that's pretty much where we are. Which is where we were last time to fill the project up. Or we could just get another site lot, try to retain that and then just go from there.
I, I just want to be clear. Unfortunately, it's not in this plan, but the resource protection zone is like here. I do, I can go back if you'd like.
We saw another map that showed it pretty well and it kind of, I'm not sure exactly when you, okay, I'll, I'll wait for that. But basically you need to demonstrate that you can fit four conventional five-acre lots on this parcel. I, I think you remember the conversation.
I know, I very clearly, yes.
Okay, so that's, that's what we need to see. And then at that time, if you can fit four, you, then you come forward with a proposal for a cluster subdivision that is outside of the shoreline zone.
And I think the shoreline zone you're defining is 250 feet.
Correct.
So, and that's what we disagree with you.
Well, it's hard. I mean, it doesn't matter if we disagree or not because we just, we're bound by the ordinance. You look at the ordinance, cluster subdivisions are allowed. Yeah, we, I mean, this is the same conversation we had last time.
Yes, but, but we've been, we've consulted professionals, which is what the difference is at this point, so.
Well, the land use chart isn't really up for debate.
Can you refer to page, I don't have it in front of me, just so...
Yeah, I did before. Page 14.
Page 14.
Residential structure and uses, E.
Yeah, I, I can't...
Cluster subdivision, shoreline zone not permitted.
So I think Gavin started going back right to the beginning where this is, in the critical rule zone. Critical rule zone only allows for the cluster subdivision. And then it goes on to say that cluster subdivisions are not allowed in the shoreline zone.
Right. By right.
Huh?
By right.
Correct.
So whether or not it's waiveable by volunteer boards or, and I think that the inclination that we've gotten, please correct me if I'm incorrect, is generally from the board going back to the start, you all have been favorable of what we're trying to do, but you're bound...
Bound by the ordinance and that's, that's the problem is, whether we agree with what you're trying to propose or not, we have, the, 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 wait, the board has to follow the ordinance. That's their, that's their, their law.
Their duty, yes. No, I completely understand and agree.
So I, you know, I have nothing to...
But the board, what?
We all showed up to a site visit that was noticed a month ago and you didn't come, so that was the point.
I would have had to drive through someone's yard to get in there. Jason himself says that he heard my truck, so.
It was...
I was there.
We didn't even know we were on the agenda this night.
Yeah, we got to, we just came for a conversation based on new information. So saying that we don't have nothing, I think is a little disrespectful.
I didn't say we have nothing.
You just, yeah.
Well, you don't have anything new. We went through this all last week, the last time. And we spelled out what you needed to do to move forward. And I took a lot of time going through all the numbers and, and making it feasible that you could actually potentially get four lots on this.
I'm just showing, I'm just, what I'm trying to express to you is what our intention is and developing outside the 250, that is not something that we're going to bring to you. We will bring to you a cluster division within the 250.
Then we're a stopping point.
Yes, and then you can send us back to the ZBA hopefully.
You can try it, but the ZBA is, it's not something the ZBA can relieve.
I, I, so I wasn't, I wasn't involved in the conversation that you guys had with the, with the town attorney that, so I don't, I don't know any of that conversation that, that took place. You know, it would have been nice to have some kind of, you know, summary of what it was, but, so I don't know what he told you and how to go about doing it. But again, you know, and as much as the board or myself don't agree with you, right now we can't.
No, and I completely understand exactly. A thousand percent, and that's kind of where I was going. So from my perspective, and please correct me all of you if I'm incorrect, what I've heard from, from the town in general from the start is that the planning board generally agrees with what we're trying to do. You, Jason, in the land use office generally supports what we're trying to do. The town manager generally supports, the board selectmen generally supports. And the, and the zoning board generally supports, but they feel that they are unable to based on the ordinance. And my, what I'm saying to you now is that we have retained professionals who are well-versed in Maine statute and, or, and Acton ordinance. And we've told them what we want and we've been offered a couple of avenues to do that. So what, the, the feedback that we got, and this is what our intention is, is that we should go to the sidewalk. Unfortunately, that didn't go, we didn't get any feedback there. And then we are going to, our plan from here is to work with the engineer at our engineering. And we are going to propose to you a fully designed four-lot cluster subdivision. But it is imperative to us as both stewards of the land to develop between the 100 and the 250-foot buffer. And we have heard from our attorney and our engineer preliminarily, we met with both these people for 30 minutes, that that absolutely is something that you all, or the ZBA, or the select board and different avenues are able to grant.
If, if it was, it's not this planning board that could leave that. It would be a performance standard from the ZBA, if that's even possible. I don't know. Last time I thought something was possible, it wasn't.
What we're trying to do, and to Gavin's point, is we need to come back in with a fully designed plan, which we're happy to. We were not planning to come to the planning board tonight. We did not know until we got to the sidewalk that we're on the agenda. We were not noticed. We did not know. We're here to just have a conversation with you. You weren't there, so we couldn't talk to you there. The next, you weren't physically there with us on the sidewalk. The next step is for us to spend...
So next time, it'll be, you know, we're gonna have, there'll be signage.
We're now going to spend tens of thousands of dollars to design a cluster subdivision and come back to you. What we're just prepping you for.
That we won't build, is what she means to say. Behind the 250.
No, no, no. We're gonna come. So the cluster plan that shows lots.
We have other people on the agenda.
That shows lots, how we want to develop.
This is our seventh meeting, Gavin.
Okay, please. Shows lots that we want to develop.
But you still haven't given us a proper application for something that we can even look at.
You're gonna tell us that you cannot approve lots within the 250-foot shoreline and then we're going to the zoning board. That is what your town's attorney told us to do and then what our attorney has now told us to do, that we've engaged.
I'm not sure you did.
No, we have not done that yet.
He got the application, so they...
No, we have, we need a cluster. Gavin, you're not listening. We have never submitted a cluster subdivision plan to you. Your attorney told us on the phone, you need to submit a cluster subdivision. And then there are things that you will need variances from in the cluster... and then there are things that you will need variances from in the cluster subdivision based on the land. The planning board will take on the cluster subdivision and say, we cannot approve this because you're showing houses within the 250-foot area. Then they will direct you to the zoning board. The zoning board will deny, will either deny or approve that use, and then you have your marching order. So that is our intent. What we don't want to do is do this over and over.
Right, I know, I know. So the next step is, because I understand that you guys were just planning on being on the agenda, your next step is to present us with an application.
Yes.
Yes, well, the next step is determining how many houses you can have in your cluster subdivision. Is the next step.
Yes, we have, like I said, we have an engineering firm now that we're working with.
Well, maybe you should bring your engineer in, and then we'll discuss it with him.
All right, we're gonna submit a full application, and then we'll see you in court if it doesn't go anywhere.
That sounds good. Let's move on to the next step.
Anyone else have anything? No, seriously, I'm looking for feedback from someone else than Gavin.
No, we need enough, we should really.
No, asking for an application is fine, I just think that you've been very disrespectful tonight, Gavin.
I don't think everybody has, to be honest. I mean, she's said stuff, she's said stuff out of context, and everybody has. But now we're asking for an application.
Chris, we're gonna, we're not gonna move forward.
We're gonna move forward now.
If you guys want to present the board with an application, then that's what we'll do.
That's my intention, yes. Next up.
Thank you.
All right, next up, H A Mates and Watson in New Hampshire on H L L C R Route 109, Tax Map 241, Lot 006-001, and Tax Map 241, Lot 006-005, Sketch Plan Review for Mates Storage and Residential.
Hello. Kendra Maris, Senior Engineer and Project Manager with Sabeego Technologies. I have a couple of colleagues here from Sabeego with me. And so I'd just like to introduce Brian McMahon. He's gonna do a presentation of our project, a little overview. And then I believe he received a planning review memo on our sketch plan application from Benson. So I'm happy to go through that with you after we've done, done the overview. Thank you.
Could you have a change to make?
Hello, everyone. Nice to meet all of you and thank you for this opportunity. We're here tonight to present a sketch plan for a commercial self-storage facility and residential plan unit development. Our project site is located off of Route 109, it's just north of Mills Road. If you're looking at a tax map, we are Tax Map 241, and our lots are identified as Lot 6-1 and Lot 6-5. We do have a reference to subdivision plan 2B in our application as well, and I'll just touch on that in one moment. As part of our proposed project, we will be existing, or we will be amending the existing subdivision plan that's tied to Lot 6-5. Our client is currently in the process of selling off approximately seven acres of Lot 6-1. Once that has gone through, Lot 6 with the remainder portion of Lot 6-1 will be combined with Lot 6-05. Moving on to the site plan.
Hang on. Do that again?
The, the. So the, the one with the panhandle right to 109 is being combined with the remainder of 241, 006, 001?
This lot is gonna combine with this lot, and they're splitting off, I don't remember what, 6.78 acres or seven?
Seven acres.
Seven acres.
Yep.
So then the remainder would go into this one.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, no worries at all. So moving on to site plan components, I'll dive into the self-storage facility. There are five proposed buildings, they're each roughly a 5.400 square feet. In total, there are 162 storage units. The entire facility will be fenced in with a six-foot tall security fence. Site access will be provided via a shared driveway off of 3109. Utilities are pretty limited. There is no public restroom within this portion of development, so there's no need for water or sewer, or septic, I should say. It's just gonna be electricity that serves lighting for the interiors of buildings and the exeriors of buildings as well. The residential piece of this project, it is considered a planned unit residential development. We're proposing 13 single-family homes, which are located entirely within the rural zone. It isn't allowed use. Site access is gonna be provided via an internal driveway that's 20 feet wide with two-foot gravel shoulders on it. From a utility perspective, we will have septic and wells. There are gonna be two septic systems that are over 1,000 gallons each. Those have 200-foot well exclusionary zones. We will also have two wells and two pump houses to distribute the water across the site to the units. Our wells are strategically placed outside of those zones. I guess I'll touch on stormwater quickly as well. This is just a preliminary plan, so we don't have anything final. But we're anticipating that we're gonna have four underdrain soil filters. That will treat up to 95% of the proposed impervious, 80% of the developed site. And this is gonna trigger a stormwater law permit that we're eventually gonna submit to DEP. I'll touch a little bit about the natural, the natural features that we found on site. So Sabeego, we have environmental scientists, we went down to the site, it was last April of 2024, to assess the property for wetlands and brown pools. There were wetlands that were found, they are shown on the overall plan. We can call them out in future submissions as well. There are two, there are two brown pools that were found in April of last year. One is significant, one is not significant. In future submissions, we will show, or actually, in our plan right now, we're showing the respective setbacks for each one of those natural features. I think it's shown on the overall plan. Yeah, those areas right there. Significant brown pools, they have a 250-foot critical terrestrial habitat zone. Per DEP, you're allowed to impact up to 25% of that. And as you can see, our internal driveway is the only portion of our site that's gonna affect that. In future submissions, we'll have those totals tallied up for all of you to review, but we're gonna be well under that 25% impact of that zone. And then finally, I'll just briefly touch on lighting. We don't have anything designed yet, but we're gonna be working with consultants in the near future to pick out appropriate fixtures for the site. We're gonna try to keep it pretty minimal. We'll adhere to the ordinance's standards, but they'll be dark sky compliant, and we're really not trying to light up this area just because of its rural character. I think with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Kendra. We received your comments from planning, chief for, for planning staff, and she's gonna go.
Thank you.
I just want to add that, just a piece on the applications that we'll be submitting. So you're going to see a subdivision amendment, because we are adding land from one lot to an existing lot that is within the Willard Farm subdivision. I believe we provided, as part of the original sketch plan, the, a copy of the last amended Willard Farm subdivision, so you can see what it looks like now. We'll be adding in that additional land from 6-1 to that lot. So you'll see a subdivision amendment come in from us. And then the self-storage portion of this proposed project triggers site plan review. So we have had a discussion with Jason and Ben Smith from North Star Planning to, how to propose that all to you, that those applications in the most simple way possible. And what we landed on, and we love your feedback, of course, before we put these together, but what we landed on was a lot of the same information and criteria is required for both subdivision and site plan review. Obviously, for residential, it's a little bit different than commercial, but we can put that all into one packet, and then we'll submit two forms. One would be for site plan review and one for subdivision. Just understanding that you have all the information you need in one place, rather than going through two copies of pretty much similar information. We would likely submit, so site plan, the site plan application would be submitted at the same time that the preliminary subdivision application was submitted, but we started the sketch plan.
Say that again? The site plan would come with the preliminary.
Subdivision application.
Well, then there are timing issues. The clock starts on both of them, and they're different, and we only have one package. So that, that, couldn't that create some timing issues?
We have to look at the timing. You're talking about going from a, finding the application for a site plan complete versus going through the steps of preliminary, then final, or sketch final, preliminary and final. Thickets, 60 days, I'm trying to figure out, go ahead.
I was just wondering if the board thought perhaps we should view this two applications, since we already looked at the Fairgrounds variety as a separate site plan review, because the self-storage and the cluster subdivision are quite different. And roll them into one when we already separated out one item from this list, so to speak, is. I, I don't know, I'm just wondering what the board thinks about reviewing these two applications. Might be more straightforward.
Yeah, that's why I brought up the timing thing. I mean, I'm a plotter, right? So I wanna go straight ahead, and we know the site plan, boom, 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 we know the subdivision. And if it's one package, I just think it muddies the waters. So it may be easier, even though it's a lot of the same information, maybe easier for viewers to.
And it doesn't mean we couldn't view them at the same time.
Yeah, correctly.
You know, I'm not saying you have to do one, then wait months, and then do the other. Maybe we could, we could view them simultaneously, just like we would view two projects of different applications at the same time. But I feel like they should be viewed separately.
And our view is just a little less paper, but we can, we can go about it in that way if you'd like. As long as, we would just ask that you don't view them, because it's one property, and this is one applicant that's different than the applicant for Fairgrounds variety, we would ask that you do view them concurrently as best you can, you know, within the rules of the ordinance and the timing, that we wouldn't have to get one site plan approval and then come back and go through the entire subdivision process after the fact.
No, I don't think we would have to.
No, I, I would agree with you on concurrently. It's just, again, my concern is that, I mean, I don't have them laid out in front of me, but we may have a time requirement on site plan review that we. Well, it wouldn't necessarily come to conclusion and do something before the other one.
Sure. Yeah, I think it's just a matter of the way the information's presented. So we're happy to separate, separate the applications.
And what, what is the total acreage that's gonna be going with the cluster subdivision?
The total acreage, it's about 20 acres less seven, so 13 acres, I believe.
And how many units in the cluster?
13.
With the calculation, and I think Ben pointed that out, the calculation included the storage unit area for the, for the units, the number of units.
Yep, so we can dive into Ben's comments if you'd like.
Okay.
Do, do you want to do that?
Sure.
Okay, so if you're able to, sorry.
Yeah, just one second, I think, sorry, I thought it was 20 plus, like 11. I thought you were gonna, there was something, it's a mistake.
Oh, I thought you asked the number of units.
No, they're asking how many acres. Once you take the seven acres away from the, the original parcel that Fairgrounds is, the storage unit and the tiny homes are gonna be, it's like 30 something, 30 something acres, isn't it?
Oh, once you add it to.
Yes, yeah, that's what I thought you were asking.
I have it on our existing conditions plan, the total acreage that, that will result from the amendment.
Yeah, so this acreage, this acreage plus whatever's remaining after Fairgrounds has been chipped up, after seven acres.
And after the, right, after the storage units are chipped up.
Sorry, I don't have that as a fact, but I think.
How's Jonathan Mates? I am, I'm G J Mates of Watson, too, this is a good idea, commercial one. Both of those, both of those pieces are 20 acres. If you think of it, just remember that.
Right.
And the store is gonna be seven. So I think it's 20 plus 13, and I think that's.
Thank you.
33 total.
That's what I, that's what I was just trying to.
I'm gonna say hello.
Thank you. Appreciate it. So to answer your question about Ben's comments, which I will read, Ben referenced the net residential acreage calculation on the second page of his map. So what Ben is saying is that, so up in the right-hand corner of the plan that's, that's shown here, if you could, yeah, zoom in so I can talk about those numbers. When we completed the net residential acreage calculation, we took the total parcel area, we subtracted 15% of that total parcel area. That is a standard that comes from the cluster subdivision standards. And this actually isn't a cluster subdivision, but it's really the only place that speaks to, gives more detail to how much of this, of this should be deducted for street, streets and access. So that's a number that we used. It was an assumption that we made, even though cluster subdivision isn't really applicable here. Wetland area was also subtracted, that was about 18,000 square feet. And then the definition per net residential acreage that's quoted in Ben's comment, you also subtract hydroxyls, and those are generally associated with well and areas. So they're one in the same, that number. That leads us to a network residential acre, net developmental acreage, same thing, of 1,185,162 square feet. You then take that number and you divide by your minimum lot size, which is two acres, to get your allowable number of lots, which comes up with 13, which we come up with 13.37, or 13 lots slash units. So that's how we landed there. What Ben is saying, his view, is that the, the area that we have sectioned off for the commercial development, his, his quote is not available for residential development now, because it's proposed as commercial. But the intention of completing net residential density calfs is to figure out what, what existing portions of the land, how much the land can support based on existing conditions. So that's why you're asked to subtract things like wetlands, hydroxyls, et cetera. So it's our view that subtracting the proposed development within the commercial area from the total land area, that's not clearly defined, it's not what the ordinance is, the intention of the ordinance. And it's part of the law. The, the self-storage facility is remaining part of the subject lot.
But the, the storage is in the commercial area. You can't use, build residential in the commercial area.
And we're not proposing residential units within the commercial area.
But you're using that area to create 13 lots.
But there's nowhere in the ordinance that stated that the commercial, the land within the commercial zone has to be subtracted from the total land area in order to determine allowable lots. By definition, we are only required to subtract streets or access, wetlands and hydroxyls.
But you can't, you can't build that. You know, the, the, the theory behind the thing, and this is my opinion, the theory, is you determine how many lots you can get out of the buildable area. That area is commercial, you can't build it. In fact, you could argue that even, you shouldn't even include the rest of the commercial area in the calculation.
Residential structures are allowed within the commercial zone. So any land within the commercial zone is, is in fact suitable for development.
Residential structures are allowed, but planned unit developments and cluster developments are not.
Right, right, right.
Yeah. So that's kind of where we're.
Right, but we're only proposing the residential planned unit development within the rural zone.
Yes, but you're using the commercial zone to come up with 13 units.
Yes, but by definition, the only thing that needs to be subtracted from the total land area is street slash access, wetlands and hydroxyls, per the definition in the ordinance.
Okay, we may have a disagreement there. I mean, I, I just, I don't believe, you can't build there in that commercial zone. And so using that to up the number. And so using that to up the number of lots you can get in the residential area, I don't think is logical. I don't think it computes. That's my opinion.
I'll, I'll, I'll get some, I'll bounce out of some people.
I, I just do want, I just want to add...
We'll put some input on that, I guess.
Not saying no, we're just, just kind of trying to figure it out.
I'd also just like to add that, that Ben is not saying we can't account for any area within the commercial zone. What he was offering is that if the storage unit facility is reserved for a use other than residential, to just subtract the storage unit facility. There's a lot of area outside of the storage unit facility that's in the commercial zone that does not need to be subtracted. So we can look at this in a different way. And I've provided, I didn't provide it within our planning packet because I just received the comment this morning. But I did include a plan on that thumb drive, Jason. Where if you run these calculations and you actually take out the access area within the storage unit facility, which is pretty much anything that's pavement. Again, that's not the definition within the ordinance, but one could assume the paved areas are used for access. And then you actually subtract the area of the street that we're proposing for the residential development. Not the fifteen percent of the total lot area, which is four acres, but the actual roadway area that we're proposing, which is one acre. We meet the, we actually are allowed fourteen units.
Did I guess the right file?
You did. In all caps, alternate net residential calcs. So to further explain that, this is a different approach that's a little bit looser. But up in the upper right-hand corner in red, so I've shown an alternate calculation that kind of incorporates what Ben is saying. We've got total parcel area. The area of the residential shared driveway, which is, like I said, about an acre, forty-three thousand seven hundred fifteen square feet. The wetland area is the same. And then the access for the self-storage facility or pavement is roughly thirty-eight thousand three hundred square feet. So once you subtract all of those items and you divide by the minimum lot size, we're actually at fourteen point eight three, or fourteen lots.
And the, the rest of the commercial zone is proposed as open space? There's going to be no development there?
In the middle of the, yep, the storage facility and where the area where the units are, it's not identified as open space, but it's limited common, a limited common element. So essentially, we would form a condo association and people would own the units themselves. But the association would own all of the land surrounding and be responsible for maintenance of that land.
I guess we should, I'm thinking we should take some time to review it and then ask, do you come back with, with two applications, so to speak, so we can view them side by side? And that would be where we were for tonight.
I think some, if, if we could get some feedback on the board's opinion of whether this approach seems like a fair middle ground to our net res question.
Oh, the fifteen percent versus the driveway itself?
Right, given that...
I think you'd have to go to zoning board of appeals for that, to get a variance for that. We can't just grant...
Well, so this, the use has been defined as a residential planned, planned unit development, not a cluster subdivision, to be clear. So...
All right, well, we're going to need to get that figured out. A cluster subdivision is just one type of planned unit development. So we're going to have to really, you know, look at our definitions and determine what makes it the planned unit development and not a cluster subdivision.
We do have a memo from the planning reviewer going over the uses. It's stating that, in his opinion, this is a residential use planned unit development. Does anyone have the actual definition of a cluster subdivision in front of them?
Yeah, it's really... And we have a planned unit development definition too. I think the, I guess the cost would be more quicker at this stage.
I am trying to remember off the top of my head, but there is one particular statement within that definition that does not apply.
So in the... So page twenty-two, the zoning ordinance, cluster subdivision definition.
Okay, I was, I was in the actual subdivision regulations.
Well, that would be good to look at too. But I'm just going to read the definition of, from the zoning ordinance, of a cluster subdivision.
Go for it.
So the subdivision in which the lot sizes are reduced below those normally required in the zoning district, in which the development is located, in return for the provisions of permanent open space.
Same there.
The lot sizes are, we're not proposing lots, and so the lot sizes aren't being reduced. They're, they're just units on one piece of land. We have no proposed lots at a lower lot size than what would be required, which is typically the two-acre minimum in the zone. So by that...
That's what you're claiming the difference to be.
Yes, because lots aren't proposed.
Yeah, that's, that's the planned unit development where she's going with that.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get it figured out here.
Yep. So that being the case, and understanding...
So you're going to sell the condos, correct, individually?
Yep.
Well, maybe.
And then?
I don't know, initially.
Yeah, he's...
I know, you live forever, so I imagine at some point you don't, you think you sold the...
And they come with zero land.
That's correct.
Just like, oh, condos associations don't come with land. You get a building. And then you're used to the strict...
Yep, just trying to get it, just trying to get it figured out.
Legally, it will be described under a condo plat plan and the, from the foundation up, essentially, is what is owned by...
So they won't own their driveway?
That's correct. That would all be...
They won't, they won't own their septic system.
Correct. And the septic systems, as Brian pointed out, there are two, so they're shared septic systems between any, whatever number of units each one has, I'm sorry. I think six.
Six.
Six are going to the one closest to your cursor, Jason. Yep. And then the, the other nine would be going to the back, the septic in the back. And that was the same, the same thought that we had with drilling just two wells that would be shared between the units. They're very small units. So we would use a well and a pump house and then distribute the water evenly to the units. Which is why it's just cleaner for the association to own and maintain all of that and for individual owners to pay into an association. The, I, I would like to clarify too. The condo association would be separate from the owner of the commercial unit, which would be considered the storage facility, the storage unit facility itself. So the condo association wouldn't have any relation to the owner of the storage unit facility. They wouldn't be responsible for maintenance. But that entity itself would be responsible for its own maintenance of its surrounding property, buildings, et cetera. I think we originally started talking about cluster subdivisions because you had a question about
The road, the fifteen percent.
The fifteen percent versus the road. So I just want to reiterate that that fifteen percent that we originally assumed was under cluster subdivision. This isn't under cluster subdivision, but again, it's not clearly stated in the ordinance how to subtract that. So it's the conservative assumption that we went with. So in explaining that, that takes out four acres of usable area, when in reality, what we're proposing is one acre of street or access road for the residential development. I, I felt that it was a fair proposal to, to modify the calculations in this way. And we're allowed the fourteenth unit, but at this point, we are proposing thirteen, if, if this approach is taken. We also can't really move forward with a design and full application material until we've gotten the feedback from you. We're not trying to push you into a decision, but until we've gotten the feedback from you that our net residential density calculations do work.
Yeah, and that's, we're still, I feel John and I are still considering that. Maybe we are looking for third-party advice on, on the commercial zone and the... And I, I don't feel like we're going to make a decision on that tonight.
So me, Kendra, myself and Ben, we had a pretty lengthy discussion. Because originally this proposal, the units were inside the, the commercial zone somewhere.
Yeah.
And as you, as you noted, you guys have noted tonight, that they're not allowed in there. So they were moved out, so that, that does make it into the, the road zone.
But the road is, the road is still in the commercial zone and it is part of the planned development.
Well, with that being said, they could put in the road for road frontage and still do it there. There's ways they can, you know, that doesn't prohibit them.
Trying to cut through the, the commercial zone to get to there.
No.
But if they're sharing maintenance of the road?
The, the condo units are not sharing any maintenance with the storage unit. The storage units is coming off of the entrance for Fairgrounds.
Right, well, I feel like we could easily see an application of storage units without any further input. Really, I don't feel like there's any delay on that. Correct?
Well, not really, because the land that this, that the proposed storage unit facility is currently on, we have to go through a subdivision amendment in order to bring it into the lot desk, that six dash five. So that's why these two applications have to be reviewed concurrently because without a subdivision amendment, the land is still separate.
Well, well, the one application for the storage units would include a subdivision as part of its, as, as, as part of it, as well as the second area view. And that would be no problem.
I'm sorry, I'm not, I'm not following what, what you're trying to say.
Well, you're, you are going to have two different permits, so to speak. One for subdivision and one for site plan review, just for the storage facility. And there's no doubt, you know, we don't, it's fine to present those at the same time.
So you'll need a subdivision amendment for that one anyway?
We will need both permits, yes. So is your suggestion that we submit just the site plan review application first for the storage?
I think they, they're trying to get some more answers on the, the net residential. Does that...
We're just trying to figure out how you can push forward as readily as possible on, on both projects. But it seems like there's some more substantial questions about the planned unit development aspects and trying to figure out how you can progress readily on the storage unit.
So...
You know, without just saying, come back next time with, and we'll, we'll have our third-party input and we'll, we'll go through this same thing again.
What would be the process, if you're looking for feedback from Ben on these questions, what would be the process for getting the board's questions to Ben so that we can properly answer them for the next meeting?
Well, we would draft them up, Dave would write them down and they would send them over to Ben.
So I have, I, so we have the minutes right now. We can take minutes, get them over to Ben. You guys, if you had the applications, we could, whatever, I would still submit them to Ben for review for any kind of comments, along with what they're looking to do.
Maybe we could get them at the next meeting.
He, he just had, he was on vacation today. It was the only one he couldn't make. He couldn't make it on Friday, so can you please leave, give me the memo of some of the stuff that we've talked about on this so that the board has some kind of idea of what our discussion was about a couple weeks ago or two? And Dave, I had to review this application as well. He just, like I said, he just couldn't make it.
But it seems like Ben already indicated that he felt that using the remainder of the commercial zone as open space for this planned unit development would be acceptable. So perhaps...
He only called out the storage unit.
Right, he just says you're ready for storage. You can't use that because it's... Well, storage is commercial with the, with the condos, or residential. You can't have two in the one. So he was like, okay, take out that section, remove that, and then you get the remanale.
I have a proposal.
Another part of it.
If, if maybe the big deal is that we could submit this plan with our alternate net residential density calcs so that Ben can see what we're proposing. If this seems reasonable to the board, he can then comment on if this is a reasonable approach, which I believe would answer the board's questions on whether or not we've achieved proper net residential density to propose thirteen units? Is that a fair way to go about it?
I don't have a problem with that. It's essentially, it's going to be up to the board members.
I would ask that we reach out to Southern Maine Regional Planning because one particular question...
I'm not going to involve another, that's not what I'm doing, no, Kevin, I'm sorry. I, I don't think it's right to be swapping planners and asking somebody other information when I have a legitimately... Yeah. Sorry. I mean, I, it just makes, it makes zero sense to me to, to, if I, you know...
Well, it seems like we already have Ben's opinion, but we're still at a stopping point with our own thinking on this. And that's why I was wondering if the board itself, basically, Ben is, is working with the applicant.
He's working with me.
Perhaps we could get a consultant to work with the board.
So Ben's, Ben's working with me because I presented, so Kevin, I presented this to Ben in the first application that I found that I couldn't move it forward to the board because it didn't meet my, our zoning rights. That's why I called Kendra and she said, well, can we have a conversation with Ben, see if we can work this out? That's why Ben doesn't involve, or we have a three-way conversation. How do we get past this application that doesn't, that doesn't work right now? So Ben's not working with, with the applicant. Ben's working with me. It was how do we get this project to move forward to get in front of the board? So Ben has no ties to the applicant. It's me, you're the, and the planning board.
Well, let, let's, and I'm sorry, Kendra, could you restate what you said the question would be going forward? Because I think we need to readdress it with Ben.
Yeah. If he was here, he could answer it for you guys. And I do apologize that he's not, but I can't control him.
Yeah, we can't, we can't control him.
Yeah, no, no.
My, my proposal was, I think that this plan, which you're just seeing for the first time as part of our presentation, I think we did a good job of, it felt like you were more informed at this, with using this approach to calculate the net residential density. So my proposal is that we submit this plan formally to the town of Acton and we submit a cover letter that explains our way of thinking and those updated net residential calcs. And then Ben can formally respond to this plan and our approach. And then we can meet again at the next meeting to go over it.
Well, I, I think we also need to ask him about the other, the rest of the commercial area too, which he didn't address.
I have that noted too.
Okay.
This is my opinion, guys. If the applicant wants to submit an application for the way, how she wants to present it, and you guys don't like it at that time, then you can say, hey, this is what we need to change.
Absolutely. This is, this is sketch plan and, you know, we're giving some feedback where we think there might be an issue, that's all.
No, yeah, and that's why I'm just saying it was my opinion.
Well, that's what we're supposed to do during the sketch plan, right?
Yeah.
Sounds like we have a way forward.
Yeah, you're all set with us, then. We're good to go. We won't take up any more of your time.
I'll, I'll email Ben first thing in the morning and we'll get your response. And then you guys can get your applications as quick as possible, whatever hour you're going to do it. Then we can get it reviewed, get it to the board members and move forward, hopefully.
Okay, and in that process, we'll be submitting this plan along with just a cover letter of an explanation?
Yeah, so this will be, you're going to be submitting, let me, at this point, it's preliminary subdivision and site plan review.
Well, so I was hoping that submitting this plan and getting Ben's further comment on the commercial zone, the land within the commercial zone and the approach to the net residential calcs that we're talking about here before we continue on with an application. before we continue on with an application, if we're not allowed the thirteen units. If it's, if it's found to be that we're not allowed the thirteen units, so.